Good evening and welcome to the Governor's Room at St. Peter Community Center. It is Monday, March 17th, 2025, 6:30, 2:00 PM. We're here for the regular board meeting of the St. Peter School Board. We'll call the meeting to order. First thing up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need to consider and adopt the agenda, which can be found in the board book online and in the packet in front of you. Motion and a second? Any discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Agenda is adopted. Kimberly, do we have, do we have any other requests to speak?
Yes.
We have one more else I'm excited to hear.
All right. We need to approve the consent agenda items, which are also in your board book packet.
Mr. Chair, I approve the agenda items.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved.
Just as a matter of point of information, Board Chair Potts, in my 14 years as a superintendent of schools, I have never seen this many committee minutes. You've had a lot of meetings.
Word is hard at work. Next up is our student spotlight. Ms. Sikora, you have someone with you.
I sure do. I want to sit right here.
You do look out some ingredients.
That's what I said. Better than me, for sure. So I have Akoni Hoffer here from South Elementary. Akoni, what grade are you in?
First.
First grade, yes. And you have lots of teachers this year. Who are some of your teachers at South Elementary?
Ms. Alderman and Ms. Warner.
Yep, those are your two main teachers, aren't they? And how come you have two in your classroom this year? Do you know?
Because Ms. Warner had a baby, so we have a sub.
Yes. And she's been kind of in and out, so you've had two teachers kind of all year. So that's been kind of fun, right? Yeah. And then you have some teachers for specialists. Do you have a favorite specialist class? Steam or art or music or gym?
Gym and art.
Gym and art, yes. And I had told Akoni, because when we were talking about school, you said that school was just fun in general. Right? Okay, so then when I asked Akoni, what's, what's really fun about school? One of the things you said was math workplaces, right? So I was supposed to bring an example of a math workplace, and I forgot. So I'm sorry. But Akoni, will you help me share with these folks what a math workplace is?
It's where like you have a partner and you like play a gamish thing.
So they have lots of different options, don't you, for math workplaces? And there are different games and different skills that you work on. And the one that Akoni wanted me to bring, what was in that one? Do you remember? It had different pieces that were different.
Shapes.
Different shapes, because they're working on two dimensional shapes in first grade. And it was a game, so you put the different shapes on, and we played, and I won, but barely. Because Akoni is pretty smart and pretty good at math. Right? Yeah. Akoni also really likes art. What's a fun art project you've done this year?
Used clay and glaze.
Yes. What was the one that you recently got to bring home? You guys, did you do the lily pads or the rainbows?
The lily pads.
They were pretty cool. They did lily pads, they did drawings, and then clay, right? One of the things you also said was earning Star Pride rewards. Can you tell them about the Star Pride reward you've been working on with Ms. Alderman? Do you remember? You had a word at the front of the class. What was the word?
Cooperation.
Cooperation. And that's kind of our, our purposeful peaceful or people theme, isn't it? What does cooperation even mean? That's a big word.
Like teamwork.
So when you show cooperation in class, you get to color in a letter and earn some prizes. What's a class prize that you are trying to earn?
PJ stuffy day.
PJ stuffy day. Yes, yes. So what do you like to do when you're not at school?
Play at the park.
Yep. Yes, and you also told me you like to watch your brothers wrestle. Yes. Your brothers are pretty good wrestlers, I think, yeah. And you do some wrestling too, don't you? Yeah. Can you tell us who you brought with you today?
My mom and dad and my baby sister.
Yeah, mom and dad and baby sister. She's chatting up the store back there. Okay, and then you have two brothers at home, right? What are their names?
Dominic and Dylan.
Dominic and Dylan, and they're older, so you look up to them. Yeah. So we're really glad to have Akoni here. Really excited to recognize him and his efforts as a Star Pride student. Very kind in the playground, at lunch and in the hallway, and a really good student as well in math and reading. So, thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Did you get your stuffy pajamas?
No, not yet.
Not yet, but you're close?
Working on it, yeah.
Are you close?
Kind of not really.
And just start, cooperation just started.
Okay, well, we'll cross our fingers.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. You did a good job.
Thanks, Akoni. I don't believe we have a student council report tonight. As much as Rita tried to get a student council report from our gusty visitors. It would have been a good one.
We have two more chances.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to action items. On the list of action items, the first thing up is to consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants.
There are two donations that were made to the St. Peter Public Schools over this past month. The first is a donation of $6,000 from, to the school district in memory of Edward Schultz. This donation has been in place for a number of years, and then it is to support scholarships for students. Four of the scholarships are in the amount of $1,250 and are awarded to students who are active participants in co-curricular activities or involved in community service. And there are two scholarships in the amount of $500 that are awarded to students who plan to attend a career technical or vocational college program. That's a new addition to the scholarship program, and we're very thankful to the Schultz Foundation for that gift. And secondly, a donation of a Zing multi-position stander. It's a high-quality piece of adaptive equipment that was given to the school district for use in South Elementary or within the early childhood program. The donation was made by Bailey and Justin Tice and provides an opportunity to enhance the accessibility and mobility support available to our students with physical needs. So I recommend you accepting those two donations as presented.
I still move that we accept these gracious gifts.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Thank you to the Schultz and Tice families. Next up, consider policy for approval with a second reading. Dr. Olson.
The policy that you have in front of you for a second reading is Policy 804, Information Security. That policy is designed to provide the necessary access to district data while at the same time protecting the confidentiality of that data. The policy is recommended by Technology Director Gus Sorbo, and it's a part of the district's risk assessment and cybersecurity practices. The policy is modeled after a policy that has been adopted by the Minnetoka Public Schools. It was reviewed by the Policy Review Committee at their meeting on March 12th, being presented for a second reading, and the Policy Review Committee recommends its adoption, as do I.
And as a reminder, Gus was here at the last meeting to talk about it as well.
Thanks to Gus's clear explanation, I'd like to move to accept this motion, to approve this 804.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a perpertion. Designee in lieu of the superintendent, would that be Gus?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Policy 804 is adopted. Thank you. Next up, consider policies with legislative requirements or edits for approval with one reading. Dr. Olson.
There are a number of policies that were reviewed by the Policy Review Committee at their meeting on March 12th. These policies are presented because they have updates due to legislative changes or edits, as Chair Potts mentioned. The first is Policy 607, the organization of grade levels. What that policy does is adds the forensic mental health program. You may remember that we had a program at the state hospital called the Young Adult Adolescent Program, or YAP. That program name has been changed to the Forensic Mental Health Program. So this is just an update that clarifies our educational program at the Forensic Mental Health Program on the state hospital campus. There's Policy 608, Instructional Services Special Education. That's a legislative change that just provides definition, a clear definition of a child with a disability. And that's in your policy presented with board book and in your packet as well. Then there's Policy 609, Religion and Religious and Cultural Observances. That adds a cultural observance provision. Again, that's legislatively mandated. We have Policy 613, Graduation Requirements, that updates graduation requirements and updates references. Mrs. Ingeldinger and I, prior to the Policy Review Committee, looked at the policy and needed to make some adjustments because it did not reflect our actual graduation requirements. You may recall that we require 27 credits for graduation, including four credits in mathematics, four credits in social studies, four credits in science. Which one am I missing? Did I say mathematics? In English, four credits in English. In addition, it adds a provision for the personal finance course. That course requirement is in place for our current entering ninth graders, Mrs. Ingeldinger, I believe? The, the personal finance.
For ninth graders, it will be required in their junior or seniors.
Yes. So we included that provision, and we took out a provision that added a credit for eighth grade mathematics, which we no longer have as a credit for eighth grade mathematics. You can accelerate into your high school mathematics program via eighth grade mathematics, I believe. Dr. Graff, correct? Yes. So, that's that piece. And then Policy 616, School District Systems Accountability, removes the world's best workforce. The policy committee was in consensus that the school board adopt the following policies in a single reading. Policy 607, 608, 609, 613, and 616. And I would mention that there were also two policies that the Policy Review Committee took a look at. Those policies had technical changes, just formatting, and the practices, those do not need to come back to the board because they're very small technical updates, but they do get reviewed by the Policy Review Committee. So I recommend your approval of those policies.
I have a question on 608. So they added a lot with the definition on the child with a disability on number three there. But can someone answer for the, the school districts so they can do an assessment for just adaptive FIAED without doing the comprehensive evaluation? And then it says, "A parent or guardian may request that the school district conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the parent or guardian's students." So as a parent, I read that as if Charlie's my son, and they were, the school was going to just do an assessment for the, just for FIAED, that as a parent, I can then request that, no, I want to do.
Correct.
Is that, is that how, okay.
That's actually, yes.
Charlie, you're a great son.
Is Charlie having a full assessment or not?
He is. Yeah. I care. I want the best.
All right, we have the policies before us. We do not yet have a motion or a second.
I approve that we approve Policy 607, 608, 609, 613, 616 as reviewed.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. Relative to Policy 613, a very broad curriculum, which is wonderful. I also glad to see the credit equivalencies that are offered there. That's, I give students a bit of options.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Policies 607, 608, 609, 613, and 616 have been approved in one reading. Item four, consider approval of Achievement and Integration Plan. Ms. Pravky.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. So just a reminder, we've been receiving achievement integration funding since the 2019, 2020 school year. And so this is our third cycle submitting a plan. The purpose of the plan is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. As I said, it's a three-year plan. It's aligned with our strategic plan. It's also required to be aligned with the CACR Plan in the application. It does still say world's best workforce, but it is the CACR Plan. And we would be receiving 261,000, about $261,000 for the 25, 26 school year and annually thereafter through the course of the plan. Eighty percent of the funds are required to be used on direct services to students, and 20% can be used for professional development and administrative fees. So we really focus on providing some services to our students, which I'll talk about, as well as having activities that we work in conjunction with our partnering districts, Mankato and Janesville, Waldorf, Pemberton. So as I said, our plan for our funds for the 25, 28 plan are to continue our student support liaison positions that we have in the district, fund our diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator position partially, and then co-teacher, the co-teacher model at the high school, which includes a content teacher and an EL teacher team teaching in a classroom. We're required by the state to have three types of goals. The first is to increase racial and economic integration. The second is to reduce disparities in achievement. And the third is to increase access to effective and diverse teachers. So keeping, keeping those in mind, we developed three SMART goals. The first is increase the reading proficiency for all students from 68.48% in the spring of '24 to 76.8% in the spring of 2028, as measured by the Fastbridge Reading Assessment. Along with that goal, we have key indicators of progress, or KIPS, which are our benchmarks for checking our progress along the way. And those KIP reports are presented to the state in December of each year to ensure that we're staying on track. The second goal, SMART goal for our district is to increase the number of students graduating with college credit, industry certification, or workforce-ready experience from 144 students in the spring of 2024 to 153 in the spring of 2028. Again, we have coordinating indicators of progress for that goal. And then our third goal is the number of teachers in St. Peter Public Schools completing at least one professional development workshop on creating inclusive classrooms will increase from 121 participants this school year, '24, '25, to 121 teachers completing two or more workshops by the conclusion of the, the cycle for the, for the funding. So our submission timeline is March. And we have submitted this grant, and we do require board approval and a signature page be sent, so.
Just as a point of note here, we needed to get the grant in by March 15th. We were in contact with the Minnesota Department of Education to let them know that our board meeting was set for March 17th, and we could do a special board meeting if necessary. And they indicated that would not be necessary. They would accept the grant, and then the signature page after you had an opportunity to consider and approve the grant. The other thing I would note is, if you take a look at the goals, the goals are broad in nature, and they, they're zeroed in on all students. That was at the selection and, or the direction, basically, of our contact at MDE, who then said, in your key indicators of progress, you move back down into racially and economically disadvantaged students in terms of the goals. The last goal is kind of an interesting one. The number of teachers completing professional development in inclusive classrooms. The idea there is if you have more inclusive, more welcoming classrooms for students, the end of the day, those students are going to have greater attendance, are going to be more engaged in school, and more students are going to graduate. So sometimes the question is, how did you get down to those key indicators of progress around graduation rates and attendance? It's because if you have, again, those safe, welcoming, secure environments in your classrooms, you're more likely to have students be successful. So, questions?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question concerning the difference between Goal One and Goals Two and Three. In Goal One, we speak in percentages. In Two and Three, we speak in actual numbers. So do we fail to meet Goal Two if we don't have 153 people graduating in 2028? That's why I would prefer to have percentages rather than numbers. And if we're, you know, if we don't have 121 teachers.
We'll have 100 and. We will have, we'll have more than 100 and. These are students who are graduating with those credits or industry certifications that may earn them earlier than their senior year.
Right.
So they could earn multiple prior to their senior year. So it's, it's the number as opposed to the percentage, because you start talking about increased by 2%. We started to talk about a number is a more tangible measure, I think.
But so how do we know how many kids we have in that graduating class? Because you can only count them once, right? You can't count them multiple times if they take more than one college credit.
Correct, but, but this is between their junior and senior year. They may earn, this is the number of college credit or workforce certification or work-ready experiences cumulative. So it's not like a singular, one-time event for a member of the class, graduating class. It's.
So you're telling me that it's not 144 students?
Correct.
It's 144 experiences?
Yes.
But I thought you could only count one? That you couldn't count the same student multiple times?
It's, it's the number of students who do have either a college credit, an industry certification, or a workforce-ready experience. And those numbers are tracked every, with every graduating class.
Right, I understand that, but the way I read this, it's the number of students, not the number of experiences.
Who graduate with.
Right.
Right.
So if you don't have 144 people graduating that year, you might make your goal.
But we will have over the next three years.
So we have three years to meet that goal?
But we'll have more than, we, we have 100 and, the smallest class that we'll have is 170 students in the next three years.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll be within that. Now, if you had that goal 10 years from now, it'd be a different story, maybe.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we don't lose them.
Correct. And hopefully, this is, so the other piece that we really tried to do is to talk about alignment of all of our goals and initiatives. So we have introduced the Diploma Plus program, right? And so rather than a goal that isn't related to work that we're already really working and focused on, we wanted to make sure that that was a goal that we had in place. We obviously are trying to focus on reading. That's goal number one. And we have to train our teachers in culturally responsive, inclusive teaching practices. So that's the reason for that number in Goal Three.
But if we really are going to have 173 people graduate in 2024, I would hope we have more than 144 of them that has done one of those three things.
The goal is to have everybody.
Right.
But we also wanted to make this manageable. Because it's going to take a while. We have to, we're still working on getting some of our teachers up to speed on the industry certifications, the welding certification, for an example. That number is going to be higher, though, because we already know that we have some students who have both the Food Safe Certification, is that correct, Mrs. Ingeldinger? And sort of, that's new this year. But we had to have, they make you start with a baseline that you actually have as a measure, and we can't tell them what the baseline is for this year because we're not at the end of the year yet.
I ask a really silly question. So does this mean that every year we're going to have 153 people? Or in the next three years, we're going to have 153 students?
Next three years.
Over the course of the next three years, we will have 153 students? So not every year? Cumulative, okay.
By the end of three years.
That's what I thought. And I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And if these, if they don't like these goals, they'll give them back to us.
Yes. We're going to well exceed that goal.
I mean, MDE will give them back to us, and sometimes we have to.
And we've submitted over a week ago. We haven't heard anything as far as any revisions that need to be made, but if they come our way, certainly we'll do that.
I think Tracy and I are confused.
I'm not. Why am I confused?
Because it's not a total of 153. It's not 50 in one year plus another 50 plus another 50.
At the end of, at the end of that year, 2028, there will be 153 students who will have earned one of those three. Work-ready work experience, college credit.
153 students in the class of 2028.
Correct.
Non-cumulative.
But we have three years to get to that number.
Right. And they don't have to earn it in their senior year.
Correct.
But out of that graduating class, there will be 153 people.
Correct.
As I said, we submit updates to MDE annually, and so if we're not looking like we're on the right track, then we monitor and adjust and.
Yeah, we actually sent these goals in three times.
Yeah, to have her review them prior to officially submitting.
And they came back telling us to be more general. We were, we had more of our indicators of progress in our goals to start with.
Yeah. And those benchmarks, we, you know, overall, we have about nine indicators of progress or benchmarks that we'll be monitoring to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. Anything else?
It's the first time Mrs. Pravky and I have written this grant.
We spend a lot of time together.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's been great. Well, you know, this, certainly this plan and this, this funding supports some really important services for our students, so we want to make sure we, we do it well. All right.
I approve the motion or the, the application that has been submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. We've approved the Achievement and Integration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, consider a change to the 2024, 2025 school. Item five, consider a change to the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school calendar. Dr. Olson?
As you are aware, we are going to be in the midst of a very big, quick move out of the middle school, early childhood district office building at the end of the school year. And that's going to require that the moving company starts to work on the process of packing up boxes and getting things out of classrooms as early as May twenty-ninth. They're going to kind of work around the, what would be the middle school, early childhood teacher workday. So what we're requesting and proposing with this calendar adjustment is to end middle school one day, middle school and early childhood one day early. This does not impact any of the other buildings in the district. They remain on the same schedule. That then allows for the twenty-ninth of May to be a teacher workday, where they're compiling end-of-the-year reports and grades, et cetera, and May thirtieth, Friday, to be a quote-unquote "packing day", so that by the time we hit Monday, June second, we're totally out of the building, and the construction begins in what the ICS folks call the summer slam. So their construction window is June second to August twenty-second. And then there'll be another very intense move back into the building over the weekend of August twenty-third and August twenty-fourth. Workshop starts on August twenty-fifth. So, the proposal is ending one day early for middle school, early childhood in order to accommodate the building project. This is consistent with what happened in, I can't remember if that was two thousand, at the end of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, I believe, with the construction at the high school.
I move to move the middle school buildings last day to May twenty-eighth, which I believe is one day prior to the currently scheduled...
Yep.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Bet the middle school teachers are excited.
The district office staff is excited.
Yeah. Agenda item number six, consider a change to the day and time of school board meetings for the period of May two thousand and twenty-five to June two thousand and twenty-six.
This reflects the discussion that you had at your study session on March third. We talked about changing the day and time of school board meetings. So you'll see in the revised, proposed school board meeting calendars, the meetings beginning with the study session on May seventh would move to Wednesday, starting at five P.M. They would remain in the middle school media center for May, and then be changing to the community room at the high school for the next school year. And the regular meeting in May, Wednesday, May twenty-first, five P.M. start, and then that continues with a similar calendar all the way through. As you mentioned in your study session, one of the pluses behind that is you avoid those two holidays that shift you off of Monday meetings, that being Martin Luther King Junior and President's Day. So, based on your discussion, I would recommend you change the day and time of the school board meetings to Wednesdays at five P.M. And we're all on board with this room and with Tony and the whole nine yards, so we're ready to go.
I have a question. What is the, maybe I know, what's the special board meeting in April? Monday, April twenty-first, in the community ed office?
That would be a closed meeting for the purpose of negotiation strategy.
I gotcha. I was like, oh, we've never had a meeting in the community ed office.
Since we're just right down there, we can pop up and...
Okay.
Yep. So questions?
After Olson mentioned the high school community room for study sessions after the start of the school year, it's still indicated on these two calendars that we use even more.
We would need to change that to the...
Did you want it to be in the high school?
Isn't that what we...
We, we had discussed that previous to this five o'clock discussion because we were concerned about the middle school construction.
Wait a minute, we could be back in the middle, we could be back in the middle school next, media center next year, correct? Yes. Yeah. So we could...
It could just be this.
Just, just for the summer. So back to the, I think, I think that's a good location. So, yeah, no, we're good to go. I'm sorry, I misspoke on that. Thank you.
So, so technically, we don't have, we will be the remaining study session in the media center. And then we don't have another study session until October, which we will be back in the session.
In the media center.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so I think we're good.
The only thing that you, in the past, what, what we have done, although that will be up to you and the new superintendent, is in, there's a July board study session. But that could be prior to the beginning of the regular board meeting.
Haven't we combined them in the past?
Yeah, or, we could do something like that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're good to go with the, with the, as presented, we're good to go.
Somebody just send me a calendar invite and I'll be there.
Yeah. Kimberly's on it.
One twenty-one's there approved, and I will need updates on the Google Calendar invites, but we'll change the time and locations.
Awesome, thank you.
That's perfect.
Thank you very much.
I move that we approve changing the dates of the remaining board, regular meetings and study sessions until June of twenty-six, to start at five P.M. On Wednesdays, as listed on the sheet in front of us.
Beginning in May.
Beginning in May. Beginning in May. Yep. Twenty-five.
I will second that.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Admin team, this is your last chance for like a nine P.M. Friday night meeting time. Something more desirable than Wednesdays. Yeah, yeah. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
So, one of the items that's always been on the agenda in January at the organizational meeting is to set the meeting time in place, so can we dispense with that, or are we just...
We have a chance to review again and decide if you wanted to make any changes at that point in time, but...
Okay.
We've done it both ways. We've sometimes set the calendar on, at the July board meeting for the, so that it was mirrored the fiscal year, July to June, and sometimes it's been at the organizational meeting. But you'd have an opportunity to either stay the course at your organizational meeting or make an adjustment if you chose to.
I think it's, I think it's worth reviewing at the organizational meeting as an agenda item.
Yeah.
If nothing else to reshare...
Yep.
What the plan is. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you. That's it for the action items. Next up, we have informational items. Superintendent's search update.
We are in process.
We had a really productive first-round interviews last week, on Tuesday and Thursday, along with a deliberation with the board to narrow down to our three candidates that we are inviting back. And we will conduct those interviews this Thursday. These are, the public is invited to these. We are, it is posted. This will be at the high school media center. Is that the name for the room? Media Center? High School Media Center, up on the second floor. On Thursday, March twentieth, we have three candidates, Kuzana Devon, Daniel Edwards, and Jonathan Graff. So we will interview those three for the final round interviews before deliberating that night. So, we look forward to the interviews that we will have this week. It's been exciting, it's been good. It's been awesome to hear about people's interest in leading our district and a chance to reflect and think about what we're looking for. So I look forward to the continued interviews this week.
Two, two points I'd like to make. First, just, just to your benefit, we will be giving candidates a tour of the district on Thursday prior to their interviews. We'll be going to all of the various sites in the district. We have tour hosts set up and meeting the principals, office staff, taking a walking tour around the building so they understand what the district looks like. In some cases, taking a driving tour. Probably not good for our, some of our students in, for example, the Ashwell Learning Academy, to have a bunch of visitors coming in, that doesn't go that well. But just to be able to see where our programs are located. The second thing is, we probably need to have a discussion about the employment contract for the next superintendent. And is that something we want to try to schedule an H.R. meeting with? I can guarantee you that one of the first questions that will come up when you make a selection will be, what are our contract provisions? What are we talking about? So we really almost need to have some of that discussion very soon. So what would you like to do? I mean, Eteev and I can work on a draft contract to present to the H.R. Negotiations Committee, but we'd need that or at least a representative of the H.R. Negotiations Committee to meet, and then obviously the full board having an understanding of what the contract provisions are all about. But I mean, I'm just giving you the alert that this is going to move very, very quickly. So the preparation for that needs to really be in place.
I like the idea of moving it up through committee or having committee review first, the way we do most of the things we do. I mean, there are MSBA sort of template contracts, we certainly have worked off in the past, that are helpful starting points. So the draft is not done, but it's not far from done, you know?
Right.
I don't know, what are our thoughts on that?
As long as it's brought to the full board.
Correct. Then to the full board.
You know, you'd need to have a discussion on...
To hammer it out with committee.
Total compensation package, you know, are we talking family insurance? Are we talking single insurance? How does that impact then salary, if, if it does or doesn't? You know, number of vacation days, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe we'll have Kimberly schedule, I know you guys have a lot of meetings, but we're going to have to move on this.
Well, I, I mean, I don't remember exactly how quickly it went before, but it was very quick.
Yeah, for sure.
And, I mean, do we need to be prepared to speak on this on Thursday?
You probably need to be prepared to speak on it on Friday.
Right.
So we have, we'd have to have a three-day notice to have a meeting, a seventy-two-hour notice, meaning we'd have to set something up. Can you check calendars, my calendar right now and just see what's, what's cooking?
For this week?
Well, either this week or Friday morning.
Well, can we have a draft, maybe without the numbers? Because we would have to have some input from whomever the selected candidate is, as far as how they want it. We could maybe have the total compensation decided. But could we have a draft available and depending on how things go on Thursday, show it to the whole board on Thursday?
Sure. I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty, a pretty standard contract. It's the M.A.S.A., MSBA model contract. I mean, the, the fundamentals are there. The one piece that I would say it would be new to your administrative contracts is a matching four oh three B. So that's something that has just, you've been added to administrative contracts in this district this last go-around. So we could put that language in there. And then it's, it's pretty straight up. One of the things that you, that I would recommend you do is you want to make sure that, that there's room for negotiation in subsequent contracts, so you don't want to throw all of the, all of the really, all of the best things in right away. You want to keep, keep some room for those to come up in, in future contracts.
No, as long as we're talking contract philosophy. The standard superintendent contract is usually three years, right?
Correct.
And you can reopen it for compensatory.
Yes.
What would be the thought process, given what you just said about having a one-year, and then after that initial year, setting up three years down the road? Or is that a, a no-go, just simply because they'll expect a three years?
Yes, I think they're going to...
They're going to, they're going to want, they're going to want a three-year contract, for sure.
However, we don't have to necessarily put the numbers in the last two.
No.
But you could, I think you could, I think we could, Eteev and I could be prepared to give you, really, really, the whole crux of the shift is going to be insurance, right?
Right.
I mean, to get to the total package. So we can, we can provide you with, yeah, we can provide you with two different options there, basically. You can look at that and then be talking total package.
Do we know what our insurance is going to be for the upcoming year?
We're projecting a ten percent increase over this past year. Eight, the, the insurance advisor, I think, said seven to twelve percent, so we've been using ten. So...
If that's the way we go, and then it's eleven, what happens?
You're paying eleven. Because you're, it's, it's not going to, unless you put a number in. You know, you have a defined contribution as opposed to a defined benefit.
Covering it, right.
Okay.
So we would...
Just to clarify our schedule, the twenty-first indicates that board designee begins, keyword, begins negotiations with, with finalizing it by the twenty-seventh. So are you suggesting then that H.R. meet prior to the twenty-first?
That probably makes sense, if possible.
Well...
Not far away.
Which, twenty-first is Friday.
So if you think about, so then you'd probably need to schedule a special board meeting sometime prior to the twenty-seventh in order to have the full board consider the contract. And that could be a eight a.m. or seven thirty a.m. or whatever you wanted to, morning meeting, or whatever time you wanted to have it.
But actually, whoever is a board designee, H.R. would perhaps establish some parameters, and then, I'm not sure it takes...
Well, because it's going to come back to the board on the twenty-seventh anyway.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you're, you're correct.
Yeah.
But maybe then, would, for H.R. committee, would the twenty-first work for a meeting?
You're available eight to ten. BT can see there, she's available nine to ten.
Nine to ten?
In the morning?
Yes.
That's Friday, correct?
Correct.
I'm available.
Drew?
Yeah.
Ken?
Nine to ten works.
Nine to ten. So, Kimberly? Nine to ten, and we need to get it posted right away tomorrow morning.
So this will be a special, or...
Committee, it's an H.R. committee meeting.
So then how is this going to flow out?
So, the, the idea, as I'm hearing and thinking about it, would be to look at sort of a general framework of a contract that would have two different kind of components to it. One component, in your previous superintendent's contract, there was full family insurance. And, but you're looking at a total compensation package of X. So if you have full family insurance, then the choice is, your salary can't be as high. If you take single insurance, you could have slightly higher salary or some other sort of benefits that would fit into that. Maybe a higher contribution on your four oh three B or something like that. But the, the person that you select is also going to come in and negotiate that whole thing. And so at the committee meeting, we probably want to talk about, so who's, who's doing that negotiations? Who's going back and forth? Because there will be some back and forth. And that's what I fully expect.
So, we meet Thursday. We make our selection Thursday. Depending upon what time that is, we'll notify them either Thursday evening or, or Friday morning.
It would be Thursday evening.
Okay. But...
Can you just talk about the fact that we'd like to enter into contract negotiations? We'd be prepared to meet with you or have conversation with you at some point after Friday morning. Friday morning?
Okay.
Yeah.
And if they're, I mean, they probably won't accept it without some idea of what the pay is gonna be, correct?
Well, they've got the pay range.
Yeah.
And, and then I think the response would be, we need to sit down and talk about that because it's dependent on where you're, where you're talking about for your insurance contribution.
But, I mean, so we can give them a total package number.
Yeah.
And then we can do the details later.
Right.
So, there really is no full board input on this, then?
No, this will come to you then on the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
But that's after the candidate has already agreed to it?
Well, the candidate agrees to it pending-
Pending approval.
Board approval. And-
Part of the negotiation.
And pending completion of background checks and all those other kinds of things. So, it's a contingent offer of employment, and it's probably a contingent acceptance of employment. It's, it's very seldom that you don't close it off, but I have seen it happen before where the superintendent, the board can't come to agreement. So, then you're, you're, then you're not agreeing.
Right.
But, yeah, well, it would come, it, it isn't finalized until the board approves, the full board approves the contract, which is scheduled for-
Twenty-seventh.
May, March twenty-seventh at eight AM, special meeting. And you'd have that information in advance in your, you know, as soon as we get that all together. And you want to, again, you want to try to, you don't want to, you want to get this done quickly.
Right. All right.
Sure.
Next up, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight budget adjustment plan, Dr. Olson.
This plan was presented to the business committee at their meeting on March twelfth. There are just really a couple of things that I want to, want to update you on. The first is Attachment C, the fiscal year twenty-six budget adjustment plan. So, this is still a work in progress. Remember, your target is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty-six. And the things that are on this list right now as a draft, total five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. There continues to be work done on adding some different options to this plan, but we wanted to get this out as an information item. You had a chance to look at this at your study session on March third. You're getting an opportunity to take a look at it now, and we get it out in front of, you know, a public meeting. The work will continue. It'll come back to the business committee at the meeting in April with more of a finalized plan, and then back to you on April twenty-first at your regular board meeting for final consideration and approval. But let's just stop there with the things that are identified as adjustments and see what kind of questions or comments you might have.
Your top can attach anything.
C.
C. As Dr. Olson just mentioned, it did go through the, on a preliminary basis, the business committee last week, and very well done, in my opinion. That's, the strategies were to, obviously, there's, when you're dealing with that many dollars, there's some impact that's significant. But, in terms of keeping deleterious impacts as far away from students as possible, I think that's very well done. Also, really creative in terms of sourcing different revenue streams. To come up with a half-million dollars' worth of modifications and potential reductions and more increased revenue is not an easy task. So, I, I've been very pleased with this, given our parameters we're working within.
Did we look into at all the activity passes for kids? Did we come up with any numbers on that? I know that isn't an adjustment in the right way necessarily, but I was wondering.
I think as we started to look at, I mean, most of, all of the districts, almost all of the districts have some sort of pass or fee for students. And it would seem, maybe one thought would be, that's something you can come back and discuss further, but we're only one year into it, to see the impact of, let's see, part of the things we talked about at the business meeting, I had my head around this, is if the compensatory aid goes back to being calculated by filling out paper forms, then we would have a really strong incentive for families to fill out the paper forms, which would increase our compensatory revenue pretty significantly. And then you get free pass. So, it, it almost seems to me like we need one more year to see how that all goes, because that could be a really big, when we heard discussion at the day at the Capitol, we heard a lot about schools that were doing creative things to get families to fill out those free and reduced-priced lunch forms. So, I, I think it could be a way to get those passes, free passes, in the hands of the students that need them, but also get those free and reduced lunch forms filled out, which then increases compensatory. The second page that I want to bring your attention to is, this is a revised three-year rollout. The biggest thing in here, and just, just to show how impactful the increases are to the basic formula. So, we were projecting a two percent increase to the basic formula, and we learned at our day at the Capitol that it's locked in with the inflationary rate at two-point-seven-four percent. Two-point-seven-four percent generates four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in additional revenue. But that's not just one time, that's ongoing, because then the next year, your two-point-five percent is on top of the two-point-seven-four percent, just like when you get into negotiations, right? It's the same concept. So, just by that change alone, we go from thirty-six-point-eight days in our projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-eight to forty-five-point-two days. Now, one of the things I want to point out, because this is gonna be really important to be watching as you move forward. If you take a look at our projections of fiscal year twenty-five, our revenues over expenditures are nine-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, almost nine-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars. Pretty good. Then you go to fiscal year twenty-six, and our revenues over expenditures are twenty-seven-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Then you go to fiscal year twenty-seven, and we're in the deficit, a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars. And then you go to fiscal year twenty-eight, and we're in the deficit, one-million-one-hundred-and-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Or is that a six, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars? So, that's the thing of, that's the importance and the value of rolling this thing out over those years, because you start to look at how quickly that could start to drop. It's that snowball, that cliff that you see. So, there are a lot of unknowns when you move out to fiscal year twenty-eight. We don't know for sure what the legislature's gonna do. We don't know what might happen in terms of federal government shifts in funding potentially. We hope that our student enrollment continues to grow. That's huge, because that's gonna impact all of those. So, I think things are looking pretty good, but if you were to roll that out two more years, not so good. So, you gotta continue to eyeball this on a regular basis. Questions or comments?
It's nice to see something that we really can look out three years in advance, so that's nice to see.
Yeah, we've not, we've not always had that level of clarity.
No.
At least, appropriate. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No time for reports, building principals. You are all that is between Drew and his corned beef. Whatever you have on St. Patrick's Day.
It's all hinging on-
I didn't hear any of that. What is it?
Yeah.
It's all hinging on Mr. Darty.
Yeah, he has a big-
I want me to start?
All right. Yep, it's all hinging on Mr. Darty tonight, so-
Oh, you can count on me.
We'll go quick. So, just a reminder to folks mostly who have early childhood preschool students, that our registration opportunity is open online now, so we encourage folks to call our office to register their child for preschool or to register online. So, I just wanted to get that plug in. I did want to talk a little bit about summer programming. Here we are in March, and we're planning summer programming with a shift of the summer, a lot of the summer programming to the, what we're calling the hub-
The hub.
At North Elementary.
Summer hub.
Our Stars Academy, Summer Stars Academy targeted services program for kindergarten through eighth grade will be held at North Elementary this year. Along with that is comeback of Read and Feed. So, Read and Feed will be, we qualify again this year at the hub, North Elementary. And so, that will begin on June fourth and run through August fifteenth, and we'll get more information out to families as we get closer, but we've submitted all of the paperwork for, to MDE for that. And again, the Read and Feed is a free meal program for students ages one to eighteen. Breakfast and lunch are both served, so we'll talk more about that. And then lastly, in my report, I said, Dr. Olson and I have been spending quite a bit of time together. We'd also completed, we learned about and completed an AdSIS grant application, and that is a competitive grant through the Department of Ed, and it stands for alternative delivery of specialized instructional services. We've asked for a hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars, and if received, we would be able to provide behavior and academic support assistant positions at our elementary schools, middle school, and high school. And so, we're hopeful to receive that, and we'll keep you posted. And that really, the, the goal of that program is to provide that safety net to get kids on the right track prior to a referral to special ed. And these two can certainly talk about that more if they'd like, because we worked as a team on the grant, and everybody worked together, and we got it done, and we submitted it, and fingers crossed.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of time, effort, and energy into getting that grant completed.
So, we'll keep you posted on that.
The dollar amount, sorry, what?
Hundred-and-forty-two thousand.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right, at South Elementary, we are also thinking about next year already. We had our Wild About Kindergarten event in early March, March fourth. We had seventy-seven families, which I was really excited. It was the night before our last snow day, so that all of that weather was forecasted to change at seven PM. And so, we still had seventy-seven families. Last year, we had eighty-four, so just down seven. I was impressed. But we already have seventy kindergarteners enrolled for next year, which is above where we were last year, so we're happy with that number. Of course, we want anyone that has a kindergarten-age student that's out there and hasn't registered yet, definitely to get registered. All of it is online. There are paper copies with Kathy Wobrock, if they would like to do a paper copy, but that really helps us plan for staffing, so we're ready for all of the kids that are coming. So, very exciting to think about that. Our multilingual learners are hard at work on their access testing right now, and so that puts a little bit of a pause in some of their instruction, but it's going quite quickly, and it measures English language proficiency in the areas of writing, speaking, listening, and reading. And it helps us guide instruction. So, we like to do it this time of year, because it gives us a little bit of time yet at the end to catch up on some things if we're seeing that in our data, that need in our data. And we talked about Summer Stars Academy, but we are in our third week now of Spring Stars Academy. At South, we have twenty-seven kindergarteners that volunteered to come in and participate, and forty-five first graders, and that is a really high number, so very, very good. We're glad to have those kids coming back for that second dose of reading. And then we are really excited, in April, we have Michael Callahan coming to provide a magical celebration. Get that? Mm-hmm. For our star pride, our students are meeting their star pride goals. Coney referenced the collaboration. So, our classrooms have little challenges, but also we have a school-wide challenge. So, we've met our quarter-three school-wide challenge, and we'll be celebrating with Michael Callahan.
Very good.
Very exciting.
Magical.
Magical.
Yep, very good. Well, greetings from North Elementary School, everybody. About a week and a half ago, we had our evening arts and academic night, and saw a few of you there, so thank you for attending. Hundreds of people, it was a great evening as well, showcasing tons of talent. Spelling bee in particular was pretty packed in there and stressful, and the winner of that is no stranger to this group, Mohammed Saleem, pull it out, number one. And then second was Aubrey Beanfang, don't confuse her with her sister who is here as well. And then Nolan Stenzel got third. And then Science Fair reps going on to MSU to represent North at the regional is Gus Byers and the team of Tenley Powell and Addison Seitzer. So, congratulations to those six individuals and all the students that participated. Get a lot of parents that evening just saying thanks for allowing the students to shine in a different manner. That's not always like athletics and performance is that way. This is a competition of performance and in the academic sense, in the art sense, so it's a great evening. Also, end of third quarters coming up. We will have passion projects on Thursday, some new topics, one-act play, line dancing, and American Sign Language. So, those are gonna be hot items on Thursday, hopefully. And then after school, that North is a busy place. We talked about the high school and middle school being so busy, but I, I think every memo I put out to parents, like any evening, we got the spring play going on, Stars Academy, like Ms. Cora mentioned. YMCA, or YWCA mindset program was new, that's meeting once a week here for six or eight weeks. Saints OT and Drama Kids. So, it is busy until about five, six o'clock every night at North, just about, excluding Fridays. It's pretty quiet on Fridays. And that's it.
I'm curious where I can sign up for line dancing. Sounds very fun. All right, good time to be a middle schooler. Betsy Anderson, on March fourth, took forty-five students to Bethany College for the Young Writers Conference, really high number for us. At Young Writers Conference, students attended a keynote speaker and various sessions to take their writing to the next level. Angie Schilling in the SPMS Theater Department wrapped up their season last weekend, Friday and Saturday, with their performance of Puffs, and we sold over, well over, six-hundred tickets between the two nights, so very well attended. The students did a wonderful, wonderful job, and I'm sure they slept for a couple of days straight. They, they worked very hard. Next, we have History Day. So, the last time I was here, I reported on the March seventh History Day Regional Competition. We had thirty projects, including forty-nine students compete at MSU. Of those projects, twenty-one, including thirty-seven students, are on their way to state, and the state will occur April twenty-seventh at the Minneapolis Convention Center. So, very successful season for the History Day projects. And then our seventh-grade students also will be attending the Minnesota History Center on Thursday of this week, a good connection to those History Day projects. So, weather permitting, the whole class will go up to St. Paul. And then lastly, just a reminder that MCAs are right around the corner. SPMS takes their MCAs, starting with April eighth through the eleventh. That's fifth through eighth grade, taking the reading assessment. April fourteenth through the seventeenth is fifth through eighth grade math. And then April twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, that's fifth and eighth grade, take their science. It's right around the corner, and we'll have good news to share in the fall.
Yes, we will. High school's obviously always busy. Choir leaves for Puerto Rico, not the entire choir, not all, what, five-hundred-thousand of them, what it seems like when they're up on stage, but about a hundred. So, so, good luck to them on their trip to Puerto Rico. They should have a great time. We have four teachers who are attending the Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, so I'm looking forward to hearing what they learn while they're away. Also, the high school, along with Habitat for Humanity, just submitted a grant for up to one-hundred-thousand dollars for single-family housing, and we think our, the project that we already have going is a perfect fit for that. Out of, we would be the grantee, and out of that, most of it would go toward the build, but approximately twenty-thousand dollars of updates to our tools and equipment is included in that, so we should know about that before this summer. So, hopefully, cross your fingers for that one. I also wanted to mention, the high school has been working really hard in recent years on our attendance, inconsistent attendance, and I know that's something that's, that's in the news-
And I know that's something that's, that's in the news a lot. A lot of schools are struggling with that post-COVID. And, and we've seen some really great success, and it's a, we, our team really has it down, along with our partnership with Nicollet County. The state, the state fell from 85% pre-COVID to 68.9% statewide in '21, '22. Currently, the state has gotten that, has rebounded to about 75%. St. Peter High School was at 94.8% last year. Our lowest was post-COVID at 82.8%. So thank you to our families for understanding how important attendance is for academic success and taking it seriously.
What were we at before COVID, do you know?
Or did you just tell me?
No. Pre-COVID, ours, I have to look that up for you. I want to put it on a, on a chart, just to.
And that was just like kids that were like absent for the whole day, I'm guessing, is what the statistic was?
Well, the, the percentage is based on, you considered having, that you have consistent attendance if you attend at least 90% of the school year.
Okay.
So when you, when you hear like missing 10% of the school year, it sounds like a ton.
That's the scary.
Which is still too much, but that's really about 17 days, which, that's a lot, but over the course of an entire school year, that's, a lot of kids are missing a lot of school. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
And that?
Yes.
That doesn't count like excused absences for school activities.
Oh, no. No, it doesn't. But it counts excused absences.
Right.
Excused and unexcused together.
It reflects two things. One, excellent work by faculty, staff, et cetera. And secondly, it's a happy place to be, or they wouldn't be there.
That's right.
And recognizing the importance, so, well done.
I even attend at least 90% of the time. It's such a great place to be.
Are you excused for athletic activities?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Olson?
Three things, just to put you, give you information, we had a meeting this morning. One of the things we discovered was the, with the move, the district office and early childhood needing to move out, which we weren't tracking until about a month ago. We find out new ceilings are coming into the district office, new lights, but they're also tearing out all of the HVAC system, which means they're tearing out walls. And there was no provision for really repairing those, other than having the, the folks who are doing the HVAC stuff patch that. That, that's just not acceptable. So we had an opportunity to meet with Kalberg and ICS, and they're going to come back with a plan, and then we'll bring it back through business committee and the board in terms of what might happen. It's not designed to be more anything other than the cosmetic kind of upgrades. Maybe some new walls, in some cases, repainting, some flooring changes, et cetera. So stay tuned on that one. Stay tuned for Wednesday. We're probably going to be in a blizzard warning on Wednesday, so we'll check that one out and hopefully be able to make a decision in a timely manner for families and students on that. And then lastly, we just learned late yesterday afternoon of the untimely passing of one of our MVID paraprofessionals that was assigned to the MRS classroom at North Elementary. And Darren did a great job following our emergency action protocol. We had a staff meeting early this morning. We had social workers and et cetera onboard to work with staff and students, not only in the MRS classroom, but some of the MRS students, in particular this paraprofessional, they were assigned to the student in a regular education classroom setting. So that impacts staff, it impacts kids, it impacts the entire building. So really good job on Darren's part, and really a sad announcement that we have to make about that untimely passing of that staff member, so.
Around the table? Oh, yes, around the table. Ms. Ross.
Enjoyed going to the Capitol with Dr. Olson and Bill and Kate. It was a good visit with our legislators, so I appreciated that opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
One of the things that I really enjoy, and I know the whole board does, is the opportunity to go to many of the activities. It's impossible to make all of them, they're innumerable, and there aren't enough days in a year. But when I was at last year and made a point to get back to was Darren at North with the academics and arts. And I, last year, Darren promised me that I could be in the Spelling Bee, and I, I heard early on that Mohammed was also going to be in it. I had no chance. I did a timely withdrawal. Yeah, yeah. Seriously, it's great to see all those activities. It really is.
I'm good.
I just want to say thank you all for your diligent work on the superintendent search process. I mean, quite literally, right? The main three things we do are the budget policy and hiring a superintendent. So thank you for your diligent work. Excited about the next round of interviews and finding someone good.
Yeah, I'd like to say thanks to our staff. The business office people have been doing yeoman's work with the budget, and it's amazing. I go up there to approve bills, and they're all hard at work, and they're getting sick and tired of me walking in and asking them questions, I think. But I'd like to thank our principals for the excellent work they've done, and it's obvious, and seeing all the reports that we have of the special things that are going on. And I'd really like to thank Kimberly for all her effort with the superintendent search. It's been above and beyond, so.
Ms. Dix.
Nothing for me tonight.
Ms. Martin?
I too would like to recognize Kimberly, because it's just over a year since she's been in this position. And if you think of the things, other than the superintendent search that have happened in this past year, I'm just glad she's still here.
We all are.
And that's all, thank you.
It's a great place to be.
We did hear updates from most committees, things that they're working on, but is there anything else that we missed that any of the committees would like to highlight? Education, business, policy, HR, or the ad hoc legislative committee?
We're going to have to have an HR committee. Before the 21st of April.
Before the closed meeting.
Yeah. To get, so we'll have to work on that. Maybe Friday morning, we can.
The next meeting date.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And in terms of the legislative, our Day at the Capitol, and I think it was really beneficial for us to have established our legislative platform before we went there. That really helped us focus our attention, questions, and so on, so.
All right, the upcoming meetings are listed. We have interviews on Thursday, special board meeting, but interviews. HR has been scheduled for the 21st at 9:00 AM. Correct, 9:00 AM?
Yes.
Correct. At the district office. And then we have our regular, already scheduled April committee meetings for business committee, policy, and education committees. Before, we are back with a meeting with the, joint meeting with the St. Peter City Council on Monday, April 14th.
And then do we have that special school meeting that's already scheduled on March 27th?
On March 27th, correct. Thank you. All right. That is all. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
No second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.